Static pressure.
Yeah, okay. February fifth, two thousand twenty-five city council meeting is now called to order. Is there any declaration of conflict of interest?
No.
No.
Thank you. Approval of minutes. Can I have approval of? The regular meeting minutes for? January eighth.
Hello, I'm going to approve the regular meeting minutes from the city council meeting Wednesday, January eighth, two oh two five.
All second.
Minutes with the exception of a typo on page seven, line four administrator not administrative.
Page seven, line four. Page seven.
Yes, got it.
Okay. Any other corrections? Hearing none. Let's go with uh. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. All right, let's go to the work session on January eighth. A motion, please.
Give you a motion to approve the minutes from the work session of the city council from Wednesday, January eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion, any corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Assets. All right, I'll take a motion for the work session, January twenty-nine.
I'll give you a motion to approve the minutes from the work session of the city council from Wednesday, January twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Can I get a second? Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
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 Good. Here we go. We have bill planning commission minutes, so. It's up to the mayor to say something and I'm gonna go hmm hmm. I've got a meeting tomorrow at the elementary school for. If I were mayor contest. Oh man, this is gonna be so much fun this year. Because the guy who won, I believe, is running for uh. Class president this year. And he's gonna show me around. That's what I was told, but you know what? I don't go to school, so I don't know. Anyway, I went to uh last week. The uh. City day at the Capitol and met with Senator Weber and Representative Javadi. And I had met with uh. So the several other agencies, including the Oregon Water Resource Board. Had some very productive conversations with everybody and. I also went to. Depot Bay and saw the first demonstration of the hydrogen fuel cell generator that they have. In Oregon. Because I guess last year they lost power for quite some time and they had quite a bit of um. Trouble with medical conditions that needed off electricity and they didn't have it. So it was very interesting and when they turned it on, it was so quiet. I mean, you couldn't even hear the fans. That circulated air. I mean, it's. It's an amazing little machine. It comes in a little. Eight by ten trailer. But it's really something. Okay.
What's up with powers?
Hydrogen. You need a source of fresh water and then you have a. What do they call that? A D uh. Anyway, it just electrolysis. It puts a power through the water. The hydrogen comes off. And they just bottled it. And the only. Ways that the generator makes is water. So it takes the hydrogen, changes the chemical way, makes electricity, and all it does is dribble water out.
Did they tell you how much it costs?
No, are you kidding? I know they got a hundred thousand dollar grant for a small little.
People, is that good?
No, sixteen hundred people. So it's um very interesting what they're doing. They're trying to get all these individual um. Generators situated throughout town and tie them in so they can cut. The grid when it goes down, they can cut it off. And then each one of those generators, because of the. The software that Sky has developed, they all talk to each other and they generate as much power as needs be. Or the whole town is what their ultimate goal is. And that way, it's just really very interesting if you get a chance to go down and talk to them about it. It was uh. An eye-opening thing. Okay, so that's my council report, President.
Well, I also went to the League of Oregon Cities. But I was wasn't able to get into the Capitol because I carried a bike. And I refused to give it up, get rid of it. So anyway, I talked to the, I talked to the Water Resource Board about our. Future wealth field out here and they said that uh. That the. Their records, the application had been dropped because. They needed some more information. And I talked to the State Farm marshal guys. And then uh. I was very interested in finding out through the General Assembly. Conversations about the liability for cities and what the state legislature is gonna do about it. Like for instance, people walking down our paths or using the benches out there if they feel tall. You know, what sort of liability your heart would. Yes. And uh. Anyway, it was, it was, it was very, very productive session for me.
Great. Sure.
Uh, okay, I attended the Seaside Airport meeting uh last week. Uh, there's nothing new to report about their situation. They didn't talk about cutting a few smaller trees uh down at the end of, north end of the runway. Uh, I don't think that what they're talking about cutting even qualifies for our definition of tree. I think it's actually smaller than that. So I told them. They really didn't need a permit for. Things that aren't trees.
Like there's none in the city of Seaside?
No, the north end of Gerhardt. In our land.
The asphalt plants and. It goes around the asphalt plant and it gets uh one third, about one third of the runway.
Is that a wetland up there?
Yes.
Yes, there is a wetland.
So does that, does that play into that?
No.
And I'm asking because there was a question about whether they intend to build a fence. And I know that in their minutes, they talked about, can you, can you tell us?
Yeah, they have pursued that. That would have to be taken a FEMA slightly. Uh, I'm pretty sure Garrett said something to this. Of, to the effect that fences, if they don't block water flow or not problematic with FEMA. Pretty sure he made that statement, but don't hold.
But they're, they're not like breaking ground. They don't even have money to do it right now.
So President, to answer your question, half the airport is in Gerhardt and it's zoned RA. Just rural agricultural. The part that's in Seaside is zoned airport. So there's even two zoning situations there. Uh, let's see what else. Uh, China continued to work on a write-up link. Type of a situation for prospective uh business owners who would like to come and open a business. Uh, in Gerhardt, we're trying to put some useful information in there. Uh, I would ask if anybody has any contributions uh to make to that, uh, we'd be most appreciative. Um, and then I just attended uh over the internet, the Small Cities Update last Friday. It's last Friday.
It's not this Friday?
That's another one.
So the, the meeting, the update last year was the LOC legislative update, right?
Not last year.
Or sorry, last, last Friday?
Yeah.
So they're doing their Friday.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Updates again.
Yes, it is. All right. Okay, I'm gonna go with Paulina next.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, first of all, I just want to take a moment to remember and recognize. Uh, Cannon Beach Mayor, former Mayor Sam Stidell. He passed away in January. Um, after a very short illness. Um, he was a friend and a, and a mentor. Uh, we were both mayors uh. At the same time, we were part of the five mayors group together, got to know him then. Uh, additionally, I met with Chad twice, uh mostly working just on uh getting me up to speed on projects the city is involved with. I attended the Clatso County Housing Task Force. Learned about market-based housing, which is workforce housing for. Uh, what I would call an area such as Gerhardt, uh where uh. If you were to build, you could uh actually uh. If you put together a land trust or some other way of making. Land available. Um. The area mean income would be up to a hundred and twenty percent. And that's about eighty thousand dollar annual income. Um. That's kind of the workforce housing that if we want to. Try and build out some, that would probably be what would be appropriate for Gerhardt. Uh, but it was very interesting to learn about that. Um, I also have uh come in and looked at the check detail before they've gone out. So they've been signed and. Have all of their information. Uh, background information on the checks as they're going out. Did that twice in the month. And last night I attended the CERT meeting. Uh, there are plans for countywide training over the summer. Um, emphasis is really on safety, caring for self, family and neighbors. Um, and they did talk quite a bit about the ICS training, particularly uh ICS one hundred, two hundred, seven hundred and eight hundred. Are four really good classes to start on. Uh, they are hoping to do training. Uh, over the summer, including a countywide training for CERTs. Uh, and he went over. Chapter two of the book. So he's starting that kind of a review mechanism. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Paulina. Dana?
Uh, okay, so start off with on a high note, shout out to Police Chief Josh Gregory. So many people don't know this. You probably, I mean, if you think about it, it makes sense, but you don't really think about it every day, but police officers aren't. Normally on everybody's um Christmas card list. If you pull somebody over and give them a ticket, they're, you're not gonna be their friend. Takes a special kind of talent to meet somebody at probably the worst moment in their life and come away as, you know, with a positive outcome. And I noticed that this last month that somebody on one of our local social media sites made a positive post about their interaction with uh. Chief, and then everybody piled on and said basically the same thing that they, that they love him and that they are so glad that he came along. So thank you for being a good ambassador for our community.
Thank you very much.
Um, so I attended the PSB planning meeting and then the public meeting, and then I went to Salem with the mayor and spoke with Senator Weber and representative or. And Representative Javadi. Things that we discussed were um our water rights application, our water maintenance needs, making them aware of the, the needs of. That we have and the support that we need from them, who would hope to, to have with them. And they said that they understood that and asked us to follow up with them. So hopefully there'll be more on that in the future. Also spoke about our um public safety building. Um, and the lack of state resources uh devoted to addressing the problems on the beaches during our holiday periods. Um, they understood what we had shared with them there. Again, they are very interested in supporting our public safety building. Um, project and would want to talk more when we're getting closer to a shovel-ready project. Um, also, we spoke about revising the transient lodging tax distribution in a way that doesn't work against Gerhardt's comprehensive plan. Um, recreational immunity and that they both felt confident that that would be something that would be taken care of. Um, the FEMA buyout, um, they, like everybody else we spoke to, really doesn't, they don't have any solid answers on that. So they just said, yeah, I, I. Continue exploring it, but we don't really know what to, to say and what's gonna happen with it. Um, also spoke with the executive director of Clatso Economic Development Resources um about attending future meetings on Gerhardt as Gerhardt's representative. Um, gonna be in the next, coming up, I have the public survey, the public safety building, public meeting. I'm speaking to civics class at Seaside High School and uh I am intending to go next week to the county commission. And Gerhardt Rural Fire Protection District meeting to share updates about our public safety building. And also to share my perspective on why we need support for this project and how it's integral to the overall health of our emergency services in Clatso County. Um, and last but not least, as you are probably all aware by now, or I hope you are, post office, we do have a new contractor, Robert, the gentleman that's been behind the count for a while. Is going to continue to provide us with service, so we should see very little change there if any at all.
Thank you, Dana. Chief?
All right, good evening. Thank you again. Uh, before I go, just wanted to. Take a moment and ask everybody, remember, starting Jason Gooding, today was the ninth anniversary of uh this fatal shooting. Um, Jason meant a lot to the law enforcement community, one of the worst shift ever had in our career, so. Uh, just take a moment if you have time and remember his sacrifice to everyone here. Uh, stats, I apologize if we're so behind last month. Uh, we will have them soon, beginning the fifth. Um, Jeremiah's on tonight, he's supposed to be doing his. Um, and we should be able to wrap that up pretty soon. We'll have the January stats for you soon. Uh, speaking to Mares, he participated in a, an event at Encore Dance Studio uh last week. And got to answer questions for young homeschool children who meet there once a week or months or so and. Kind of get together as communities as they're not in school. Uh, he was helped by Seaside Police Department as well as Gerhardt Fire. Uh, they had kids got to see, you know, mercy vehicles and ask fun questions and, and spend some time with law enforcement and firefighters, so. Uh, kudos to them for that. I'm very appreciative of it. Uh, the weather, I was assuming we were gonna have crash after crash after crash. We have not. Uh, it's been, yeah, it's been pretty good. It was major stuff. Uh, yeah, it's quiet. Never set the key word. Uh, but yes, it's been good. People have been behaving, so I'm very happy about that. We'll see if we continue, but uh. Nothing crazy to report on the weather as far as law enforcement goes. Um, I'm looking at starting a reserve program. I've talked about our lack of. Officers and how we can be creative and try to make some things happen so we can have some patrol ganster patrol. Um, I have a guy that's in mind right now, uh, who has come to me and said that I could join or. If there was a program, so we're looking at putting things, things together. I'm working with DPSST right now to find out just what avenues I need to take. And looking at putting together policy so that we can implement this and get some extra bodies uh on route. There will be some challenges, but we're getting it going, so.
See, it's just, it's a, it's a full reserve or as like a citizen control, able to do, you know, stuff that, that a civilian could do.
So this is actually someone who has three years out of law enforcement and still certifies with law certification state. So he would be able to uh looking at a minimum of twenty hour a month.
Do I want to build it? Do you tackle?
I tried to tie his legs up and his ankles and shackles down, but it was hard to grab. Uh, yeah, no, he, he's very interested. We just gotta work through a few cases to see if we can continue certification might be served. Uh, but I'm very optimistic we're gonna be able to make this happen.
So it wouldn't be paying you?
This would not be a paying position whatsoever. Strictly volunteer. This is firefighters, have volunteers, it would be a volunteer police officer. Uh, someone that did the job for a long time and kind of it sticks to us.
We know that's true associated cost, like he would have to be covered by our workers comp and, you know, equipment and things like that. We'd have to.
Be very minimal, uh, uh, a lot of game. So very few comments, a lot of posts. Uh, and that's all I got.
Right.
Okay, go ahead.
Just curious, uh, continue to have a problem with this, it, I'm sure you're very well aware, with the fears, particularly on Gerhardt. The road lane, I've heard of this. Um. Is that, is that overwhelming for you guys to patrol that? I mean, where is, where are you guys at with?
It's not, it's not overwhelming. It's a time thing. Uh, we've had a lot of projects going on during the day. I'm getting, I'm getting calls to. Uh, a lot of paperwork to do. I, I know I need to get out there and patrol a little more.
Get no.
Well, I know, I know.
I'm not saying that.
No, I know, but I, I agree. And that twenty-five is hard for people to, to stick to. I got a lot of drivers and while it looks like they're going super fast, a lot of them are doing thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three. And, and that's where they kind of feel comfortable going through there and I'll stop a little bit more than. Uh, I don't like riding a tin here for six over.
Right.
And that's just not a, but I would educate them. Uh, so. We have been making sauce out there. There have been traffic stops made, especially with cottage Gerhardt Lane area, that's a great stretch through there. Uh, and we've got a great little hiding spot that we can sit in and get. And a random numbers from, from speed, so.
So. I mean, would it make things a little more tangible to increase the speed limit to thirty? That road?
Personally, and, and law enforcement view that I would have, I don't think that would change very much. I mean, if it was thirty to twenty-five, you're not gonna increase the likelihood of accidents from that, in my opinion. Uh, I'm not a scientist though, so I can't do all that, but I can tell you it, it probably wouldn't change anything if it was thirty versus twenty-five. Now, when you get up to McMenamin's area, I think twenty-five is appropriate. Um. I think you got me on topic of speed limits. There are some neighborhoods specifically preserved that I believe should be twenty, not twenty-five. Uh, there's a lot of curves in that neighborhood. Uh, people walk through there a lot and there's no sidewalk. Uh, there's schoolchildren that live there and approached by people before asking if they could lower the speed limit. So. I did know that was planning commission question or council question. Uh, it was on my to-do list. But it is something to think about. I mean, that, yeah, there's areas I think the speed limit should change. Uh. Yeah, I, I, I think Gerhardt Lane from Highway one oh one to the curve at the golf course could, would be thirty. It'd be good.
So do we? Wanna discuss that?
If you put it thirty, they're gonna do thirty-five in this order too. You know, if you do twenty-five. Twenty-five mile an hour, they're doing thirty on F Street.
I don't, I don't want Evelyn's husband going after. And, and I'll be honest with you, on that stretch, I'm looking for egregious speeds, right? I, I'm looking for people that are getting up to thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty. You get to forty, you're getting, you're sure getting stopped. Right? That, that's what we're looking for. Anyway, if you're asking with Greg, Mayor, they're gonna go at five over. If you put it at forty-five, they'll do fifty. You know, as people push it. Chief, I believe we brought that down from thirty-five to twenty-five.
Uh, it was forty-five.
Was it forty-five?
Yeah.
And uh, that was within the last ten minutes.
Yeah, it was forty-five when we took it down to twenty.
Twenty-five feels slow. I mean, I mean, you know, you're driving through there, twenty-five feels slow on that because it's straight. Anytime you have a straight stretch and there's not a lot on the side of the road, it's very wide earth, no houses directly on top of it, and then to top it off, get into a golf course where it's just. You know, oh, and so.
Did you ever raise the issue of speed?
No.
I, I think the problem is for that, for that road, uh, a lot of people could walk along that road. A lot of people walk their dogs, myself included, along that road and.
That's why we love Gerhardt's great walking town. A lot of people walk around.
Time is gonna get worse when ODOT does their changes because people from the other side of the, uh, the one oh one are able to walk over here a little bit more easily.
As long as you don't do it, they didn't serve upon it to put speed to. But if you would like to talk about speeds anytime, I would love to sit down. Go over here, it's a concern to me and.
Yeah, I was just trying to think of, you know, do we need to change the speed limit to make things a little bit less onerous for you guys?
Yeah, I, you know, we're, we're gonna get out there when we can get out there anyway, so whether it's twenty-five or thirty. Just gonna push it then, I'm sorry.
No, no. Thank you, sir. Chief?
Thank you, sir. Um, I don't think we had any other uh special events besides what Chief Gregory talked about at Encore. Um, we participated in the same thing, you know, kid running around all the fire trucks and having fun with that there, so that was. Really good for the crew to get out and do that. Um, I do have your last month breakdown for you. We had fifty-three calls for January. Twenty-six in the city and twenty-four in the district. We sent out eighty-three times. Um, fire in Seaside, um, technical rescue of Hamlet area, which was a saddle mountain rescue. And then a building fire in Astoria. And as a reminder, even though it says Astoria, we didn't go to Astoria, we went to Warren to cover them. It's like the ripple effect. We move out because then they go and then back and forth and there. Um, we did not receive any aid uh last month without a, a little bit more in the second. Um, so we ended January twenty twenty-four and sixty-five calls. So at the end of January this year, we were twelve incidents behind last year. Uh, but to date, so in five days, we've caught up and now we're only five calls behind with that. And that isn't because of the weather. We only had one. A car crash because of the weather. Maybe that was the first time of the weather. That was, that was an accident just at the Cold Lake S Coopers there. So, um, we're busy with that. Um, and with all the projects that we got going on, I was finally able to get the last two years of the end-of-year reports for you guys. So you have twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four end-of-year reports. Um, there's lots of different graphs and breakdowns in there. I broke down call types. Um, and I can go any further, I can go into further detail and then how many times we went to. They call it code one four one or one five oh. I put in general categories, easy for you to see there. Um, and even though um currently we send out any board route, we receive it. Um. Mutual aid works both ways. It's not just incidents. Um, we've had multiple people from other fire agencies come and help us fix things or we give them a call and they come and help us teach a class or. Or help us with something there that um we just couldn't do on our own. So mutually, it doesn't cover just incidents on there. It covers um daily operations and everything with that. Um, something I would, I did wanna highlight, um, from the report, uh, one of the last pages on each one, it shows our mobilization revenue in there. Um, from twenty twenty-three, um, after you take out the cost of per diem and fuel and payroll and everything, in twenty twenty-three, we uh, we. Made more than thirty-two thousand dollars from our mobilizations. Um, that bottom number, the seventy-seven thousand eight hundred fifty-seven, that includes payroll and stuff, as I said, uh, the state reimburses the city for my time, my salary while I'm gone. So that, that does not come out of the budget line there, um, while I'm gone. And then, um, we do do maintenance and that'd be a goal because it's a little hard on the locals and stuff there, but. Um, after all that's taken out, we still made in twenty twenty-three over thirty thousand dollars for mobilizations. And then last year, in twenty twenty-four, if you look to that report, after you take out payroll and everything from that, we made over fifty thousand dollars on the train moving forward. Um, once you include payroll and everything in there, that was slightly more. Um, we got reimbursed from the state a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars uh this year for mobilizations. And stuff and I go to much more detail in the narratives there of what else the state's done for us and they gave us, granted us that tender that we have that apparatus that was. Aging out from there and, um, they give us a summer staff to grant every year and stuff for that. So there's lots of other information in, in the end of your report. It's also on our website. Um, under the end of your reports tab. Um, and I had a lot of people, not a lot, but two people got ahold of me saying they had a hard time clicking on burn permits. I'm on our website. Um, it's in the same place. It's always been. It hasn't changed. Um, if you click on burning, um, we purposely put it after the release so that you have to read all the ordinances and the rules and what's okay and not okay. Then there's two things in the bottom. One says in the fire district and one says in the city limits. Obviously, you click in the city limits and then there's the city ordinance and stuff information there. And then there's a blue link that says click for fill-up or permit form. So it's all online, um, just like it has been for the last four years or so on there. Um, Justin did help me. We changed some colors a little bit so it can stand out a little bit better. Um, right where you click on the forms, you'll see from there on that. Um, but if there's no other questions, that's all I have for you guys.
Yes.
Just curious, what constitutes a technical rescue?
So that one, um, a technical rescue, anything beyond a normal, it's like, it's not a medical call, it's not a car crash. Um, that technical rescue was a saddle mountain rescue. So if it's a search and rescue or we have to use our rope rescue gear, something more technical than just that and easily help you out with that. Um, our water rescues are technical rescues. Anytime we use our rope gear, um, anytime we're climbing till the head's out of mountain, we're technical rescues.
Thank you.
Of course. Any other questions? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Master of Money?
So noteworthy in revenues, um, the city's quarterly taxes are due in January for our local transient retax and our marijuana tax. Uh, both came in at expected levels. They were um right where we expected and no real growth or um real loss in them, which is good. Uh, noteworthy. Uh, noteworthy in expenditures, there was a void in ten, ten fifty, which is election expenses. And the amount was four hundred and thirty-six dollars and thirty-nine cents. Because the county had sent out invoices to all taxing districts that were informational only. Um, but, but that wasn't clear and I was able to void the check before I sent it out. But last month, it showed us the expenditure because I wrote it up on the thirty-first and I voided it out on. February or January first, so then it showed on the December report and it doesn't show now. So I wanted to make sure that, just clarified that that check had been voided. Um, and so that four hundred and thirty-six would have been how much we, the city of Gearheart, would have had to pay. Had we had something on the ballot that was chargeable, so. The check was voided before it was sent to the postal service, so it never went to the county. Uh, there was a blade post hole digger and auger purchase, uh, in the water account. So thirty, thirty sixty-nine tools and light equipment. Uh, Public Works needed those particular small, um, implements that fit. I go be to our John Deere tractor. There was a payment to date wireless in seventy-two, seventy-two ninety-nine. Uh, for the completion of the police vehicle mount project that you guys had approved. So that project, um, is complete. Uh, we have received one new application, uh, for a budget committee. And, uh, have talked to some of the expiring ones and they're interested in being, uh. Considered or renewal and that'll come to the council in March, so people still have time to apply if they're interested. Public Works is disposing of a surplus property, uh, through a sale bid process. Uh, it will be released tomorrow on the blog and in the newspaper. It's for a two thousand two Ford F-150. Uh, there is a minimum bid of two thousand dollars, uh, and a bid agreement form is required. Um, so as of tomorrow, those can be picked up. And we will open up the bids, sale bids on February twenty-fifth. The vehicle is parked over here at City Hall. If anybody is interested, uh, they're welcome to come and look at it. Uh, as a reminder, uh, this kind of goes along with your guys', uh, council, uh, responsibility. If a governing body has a total expenditures of one million or more in a fiscal year. Each governing body member is required to take a training on the Oregon Public's Law. By your, it's, it's required at least once during each term of their office. So during one time during your office, you must take Oregon's public meeting law. And the training must be provided or approved by the Oregon Government Ethics Commission. And there is an ORS one nine two seven hundred that requires that training to be approved by an authorized person. And they do have those approved trainers, which at this point, the only one besides them. Is the Oregon School Boards Association. And you can take them online. They offer them a lot. Um, they have a great website with lots of different training opportunities and you can take them electronically. It's out at oregon.gov, O-G-E-C, um, on their trainings page. So you might wanna go out there and take a look if you're interested. Uh, and, and according to the website, it is the responsibility of the individual governing body members to keep records of the public meeting clause training that they've attended, including the date and who provided the training. So you're welcome to go out there and take a look and at least plan if you haven't taken the, uh, Oregon Public Meeting Law to go ahead and.
That was the class that was just canceled yesterday, right?
No, that's ethics, yes, sir.
That was ethics yesterday? Oh, I thought it was the public meeting. I had it down in my, oh, it was the public meeting.
Well, if you've got it, then I take your word over my memory.
But they're gonna reschedule that one.
Yeah, and this one, they have lots of them out there that you can take, but.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thanks a lot. I'll be back in tomorrow to bother you to get all that. So we don't, we don't have to take that class.
You have to take it at one time in the term in your, the life of your term.
Yeah, that's a class that was canceled yesterday and they say that they'll reschedule, like, a pair of classes, so.
In the, in the life of your term, is that a four-year term? Or is it the term that you're serving?
The elected term. So if you, okay, if you were appointed and you only have three months left, you would need to take it within that period and within that three months. But if you were.
If you're appointed?
Still need to take it, so it depends on.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's really a pleasure.
You were elected, you gotta take it.
And it, it did say each time you were elected, you need to take it.
So if you take it twice, you'll be safe.
Yeah, but if I've already taken it twice, but I've still gotta take it two more times to catch up. Thank you very much. Peter?
Yeah, so, um, last month you had asked me for some more information about system development charges. Um, what cities utilize them, what that looks like around the state and for cities that are Gearheart size. The ability for cities to charge system development charges, uh, legislature enacted those laws in nineteen ninety-one. Um. Currently, uh, well, not currently because the most recent, uh, data is from twenty twenty-three. About seventy-six percent of cities collect SDCs. Uh, the most common SDC is a traffic SDC. Uh, other common ones include water and park. The methodology that can be utilized by cities in order to determine current and future needs for new construction. And my focus was on residential construction, not on commercial or industrial because. Uh, residential is really what we're seeing. Um, the methodology can be utilized is pretty broad. There's no fixed criteria. Um, the cities that have the, uh, the larger the city, the higher the probability they charge system development charges. And there's some correlation also between the size of the city and the amount, though that's not completely true. Um, I was shocked to find that the city of North Plains in Washington County charges a SDC of. Forty-seven thousand two hundred sixty-nine dollars per unit. Um, to compare that to cities around us. Seaside has one of, um, about ninety-nine hundred. Uh, Man, Man's Anita's at eleven, three ninety-two and Cannon Beach is at eight thousand. Four hundred and twenty-eight. The cities that have, seem to have the, the highest SDCs are the cities that are either experienced rapid growth. Um, or the metro area cities, uh. Tiger charges forty-seven thousand, uh, five hundred fifty. Uh, Banks charges. Thirty-two thousand six hundred sixty-four. There are cities that charge as little as four or five thousand. Um. The legislature has recently taken a look at whether the SDCs, um, create barriers to affordability or to construction and the evidence on it is mixed. Um. They, there have been some suggestions, but there's no law that the SDCs will be based on the number of bedrooms or bathrooms. Um. Very few jurisdictions do that. Some jurisdictions do charge them based off the type of unit. So a studio apartment would pay less than a, you know, a single-family detached house. Another element that cities will look at, this is particularly true of water SDCs, is the size of the meter. So the, the larger the meter, the higher the SDC, and that's just because. The overall impact on the system, um, and that's particularly true with. Um, multifamily properties that have sprinkler systems that are pressurized, so those are fire suppression systems. So you, if you have a bunch of those in your city, then you're gonna have to up the amount of. Um, available water you have to run those sort of systems and, um. As well as meet your, your regular water needs is the reasoning for that. Um, also people with pools have. Uh, water SDCs and although they probably only fill their pool once a year or something. That, um, there are cities that really charge a high SDC for, for those sort of meters. Um, I spoke to a couple of city managers that I've worked with and a couple of city attorneys. Um, I've gone through this process myself. Uh, most of the large. Um. Most of the large planning consulting firms are able to, um, perform this methodology. One of the. Excuse me, oh. One of the things that might make sense, uh, to ask is because three J is currently doing the global lands inventory. And housing needs analysis for the county to see whether it would be possible to piggyback onto that. As far as some of our SDCs, they're already gathering a bunch of that data and that could help. Um, that could help with the calculation at a, perhaps at a, a lower amount. We would need to talk to them about that and see how much data they already have because it, if we were to do that, it would be a, a special. Special form of contracting. Um, if we wanna go out to bid for public contracting, our most recent, um. Master plans relate to parks, um, so that would be a pretty easy one. Um, and then water, we're looking for those additional water rights, so that would be another one where. We would likely be able to get some data, um, pretty easily. Um, again, I, I'll. I was, I was on vacation last week and then as soon as I got back, I got sick, uh, fortunately not COVID. Um, so I, I've been able to gather all the information, but I haven't had time to really talk through everything with Chad. Um, as far as the Portland State population numbers, which. Um, I continue to go back and forth with Portland State. It occurred to me, uh, because one of the issues that we have is what the, what's called the vacancy rate. So traditionally, if you look at like the two thousand ten census, about fifty percent of the homes in Gearheart were people's. Primary residence or domicile and about fifty percent of them were not. Comparing that to the twenty twenty census, that number had the, the, the number that were the domiciles. Uh, which is people's intended home, um, had gone up to, to fifty percent. Uh, or excuse me, gone up to fifty-five percent, forty-five percent being. Um. Being vacation houses. It occurred to me that given that the census was in July of twenty twenty. And that we have voter registration for elections from May twenty, so immediately before the census. Then November, um, and then twenty-two and then twenty-four as well. That one of the ways that we could make a case for our population size was, um, to look at. The, um. Whether we had growth in, in those because those, those are people over the age of eighteen. Uh, motor voter, when people change their residence, that generally updates. So I looked at those numbers and we have had, definitely had an increase in, um. Uh, Gearheart electors during that period, pretty steady. There have been some blips throughout, um. So if you compare those numbers to, uh, then the, um. The population, like, under the age of eighteen, which those wouldn't be captured in that data. So if we look at, um, how many registered voters we had in May of twenty. And how that, um. Compares to our population, we had fourteen hundred ninety-six registered voters. The census estimate was one thousand seven hundred thirty-three, so we're able to establish our kind of percentage on that basis. Um, if you compare that to twenty twenty-four, we have, um. One thousand six hundred and sixty-five, uh, registered voters, so people who intend to be domiciled here. Um, using that, using that as a percentage and they compared it to those residents that would be under the age of eighteen. Assuming that that, um. That the population spread from five twenty probably is gonna be similar. Um, based on that, there is a substantial, uh, undercount. So I think that's the, um, we've also looked at water data. We've looked at fire calls. Chief, uh, both chief and chief Andy have been great at getting us information. Um, and I think using all of those, we're able to, to make a case that. Um, we have had very steady population growth. And the adjustment that they tried to do in twenty twenty-three. Um, our voter registration shows the opposite of that. So we didn't lose population. We've gained population. Quite steadily over that, over that four-year period. Uh, the other thing that has been mentioned in the past was that, uh, I was going to, um, have to. We thought perhaps cross-unity case and we think we have that settled. I don't wanna jinx us by saying it's fully settled. But we have parameters that I think work for, for all parties. And kind of an understanding of everyone going forward about how to, um, you know, to avoid problems going forward. So that's always a good outcome when, uh, we can, we can get to a settlement and that, you know. Um, that works for people. Uh, other things to keep in mind, I've been keeping an eye on the legislature. Um. Some of you have already mentioned the city liability. Um, for the use of our trails, et cetera. Uh, that is something that I have been very worried about. Um, that we maintain our, our sovereign immunity. So to all of you that have been advocating to the, um. Advocating to the, um, legislators, thank you so much for doing that. It's gonna be a critically important issue. Uh, the, the other thing that I would mention is that I have, this is in Gearheart's specific. This is all the jurisdictions I represent. I have been getting really inconsistent information from state agencies. As far as what cities need to do, what information they need to provide. Um, a recent example had been that, uh, DLCD is requiring, um. Local wetland inventories in instances where they hadn't previously. My understanding goes that the number of staffers in the Department of State lands that are able to process those has decreased dramatically. So the turnaround time is significant. So, uh, I was on a conference call with, um, DLCD staff and DSL. Trying to come up with something that would work and, um. It just doesn't, it doesn't feel like clear communication is happening. And it doesn't feel like people are necessarily giving us clear and objective criteria that we can follow and rely upon. So, um. I only mention that because as, as some of you interface either with legislators or, um, with state agencies. Just to caution you that sometimes we're receiving inconsistent information or it seems to be a lack of communication within the department or between agencies, which is not ideal, but something that we're dealing with.
I mean, I've heard something similar to that from, from the legislators that we spoke with.
Yeah, I, I, nobody that I've mentioned to this is acted surprised.
Yeah.
And even, even this morning, um, I was looking at a number. It was, I won't get into exactly what it was, but it was, um, it was an election-related number. And so I asked to clarify, uh, we asked to clarify, um. Uh, had a question on some whether acronyms could be used and how to count those. Um, and we're told, well, that, that word limit's just kind of a best practice. And so I was like, well. And so I was like, well, when you say not to exceed in your materials and then give a number, like. The way that I would interpret that is you can't, that's not like a try to get into, you know. This range, it's that you're not allowed to exceed it, and so I think that um. It, it just, it creates a challenging environment because we're all striving to really just follow the laws and. To unders, to be it so that I can advise all of you on legal risk. Um, and it, it's, it's challenging, it, it can be challenging if, if you're getting um. Different information from different people and then there's a general reluctance to put anything in writing, so um. Hopefully that will work itself out, but uh. Something that is challenging.
Thank you, Peter. Okay, is there anything else for Peter? Chad.
With Mayor Council, keep it quick, um, we've been through a lot of meetings as far as staff goes over the last month. Uh, and things are going well, uh, they're keeping us very busy and I wanted to thank the uh. Police Department, Fire Department in particular for all the time that they're spending working on the public safety building. Uh, those meetings are uh often and uh detailed, there's a lot of information that we're providing, but I'm very pleased with both their performance. Performance of our architect and our uh, our management group that's helping us through this, they're doing a very good job. We, uh, that said, February eleven is the Public Safety Community Meeting number three. Uh, we have gotten more and more participation in our uh town hall meetings, community meetings that we've been doing. And I got a feeling this one's going to be well attended, the architects and engineers are bringing uh some site designs. Uh, that they are proposing for the public to take a look at, they're going to garner some information from the public about which ones they like and will like. Uh, and and get some feedback there and then we will be bringing those uh to the council as well and start heading down a path of. Trying to get down to two different designs for that uh building so that we can begin costing those out. And then look at uh with, with the end game of getting to the. Uh, November twenty twenty five uh election uh period of time with that question for our listeners to answer. But so far that's going very well, uh we did get geotech information back, I shared that report with some of you, it's difficult to read and really interpret what it's saying. But basically it's short form, it's saying there are poor soils underneath the uh current fire station. And that there will need to be some sort of amendment done to make sure that we have the adequate type critical infrastructure. Uh, foundation and the foundation won't be an expensive part of this building, so we're working through that, uh and we'll have more information. At the meeting on the eleventh, six P M to seven thirty, uh so looking forward to that. We uh had the work session with the council that I think went well, it was informative for the council to kind of learn some of the things that are happening with that uh project. Um, Chief Como uh has developed a uh a website. For that we now have on the city of gearhart.com website that has frequently asked questions, it has the recordings from the old meetings. It has uh a lot of information about uh geotech process. Um, and that was the first iteration of it, today we discussed how we can improve that, so we're gonna maybe make some improvements to it. But it is live and available for the community and the counselors uh to keep an eye on that project. And it's working really well, so thank you, uh Chief and uh Christie for assisting with that. Um, we are working on a little minor remodel for the police department, uh this has to do with safety and uh. Uh, evidence retention, and so that's moving forward, we're just uh finishing off, we're waiting for one more quote and then uh we'll be able to. We'll be putting a couple walls in, some doors and we'll put a security in there.
Is that based on the recommendation from CIS?
Based on recommendations, yes. Yes. Um, we've gotten some information requests for some folks, uh you know, in regards to this army and our quick information, we've been able to fill those. Uh, and then yesterday, the day before, we had the surveyors out on the buildings. Um, surveyors and underground utility detectors, uh looking at all the underground underneath this uh the city hall and the uh. Fire station and police station and then getting that information for our architects, so you've seen some work around uh this area, that's what that was. Um. Geotech, Public Works has been very busy, they are working on projects with a sodium chloride generator, uh that's the. Machine that makes the chlorine, uh that install is going well, although it's very detailed and detailed, they've been busy. Putting that system together, replumbing, they've had electricians in, um so far the project's going all right, uh there's a few fit issues, but we're working around those. Uh, also in Public Works, I wanted to thank the folks at the across the highway today. We had to install a new fire hydrant for the development of the new storage facility. Uh, and a, a fire department connection was added to that, in doing so, we had to shut the water down in those parts of the neighborhood. When we shut the water off, we noticed we had another valve issue, um it looks like it's not really affecting anybody, Josh, who knows, his house is one of them. Uh, we're worried about low pressures, but uh we have the new parts on the way, they'll be here tomorrow and then Friday, they're gonna reinstalling that, so. They're gonna be a little turning on and turning off in that area, but we didn't have a handle on it, they did a good job. Uh, code enforcement's been very busy, uh there's been a lot of little construction violations and things that we've been taking care of. Uh, nothing that has got to uh the need for a violation ticket, been able to work everything out with the uh contractors. And most of this is lot line uh issues, been encroaching on the public right away a little bit. Um, we uh have had some nuisance issues on a few houses in town. That are taking the time, taking a lot of our time and we're, we're working through that with the police department, code enforcement, planning. And uh, and we'll soon be, we're working with our attorney a little bit on those. Um. Peter was talking about the R one zone infraction case, we're working with municipal council and we think we have some resolutions to get through that. Uh, garbage storage violations have been an issue, we've taken care of a few of those. And working with staff, um and still set a tree issue, we've been investigating that uh quite a bit, working with the county and I think that. Finally getting to um the end of that, we'll be able to uh move forward here soon. Uh, tree issues, the ordinance had a tree, the ordinance is working. Uh, and the tree cutters have been receptive and they've been coming in to get permits, ask questions. Right now, we're probably spending more time than we would normally on the ordinance because we're educating ourselves, we're educating uh the, the public. Um, so far it's going pretty well, I'm not gonna report on anything in particular, but I think that we're gonna wanna make a few adjustments here in the future. Uh, to it, just some minor things, uh and uh but let's give it some time. And we let those work, they'll break themselves out, but otherwise, uh I'm pretty impressed with the way that the tree cutters and arborists are responding to. So that's great, I think I'm in the six or seven of those permits out there and just because of the extra time that we probably spent, I spent about ten hours on. Trees this month, um trying to get things uh arranged and doing that. My whole big battle become a little bit less moving forward, all of we are getting into tree cutting, we will. Uh, public safety building, we talked about that. We finished our uh emergency power grant upgrade project out of the water treatment facility, so we had backup power for our reservoir. And our uh telemetry system and uh some power out there for our emergency supplies as well. And we got all the Water Caucus information as uh into the state. Uh, in regards to our investments, uh future investments for the Water Caucus. And so that was a bigger project that I think is gonna be very helpful to us, uh they did not promise any grants would be coming our way, but I have already received. Some information on potential grants for the type of projects that we have. And then we've also uh putting a lot of information with ODOT, we have an ODOT transparency, accountability and performance. Report that was due and we submitted that to talk about our roadways, uh how they're holding up and what some of the future projects mean for that as well. Um, that's all that I have to report for now. That's it.
Speaking of ODOT, what's happening with redoing the highway?
So we were uh awarded uh the fourth grant in the state uh to begin that project of the traffic diet and the new. Uh, intersection up here and to modernize that intersection in uh. Regarding to the lighting, the computer and the ADA access. Uh, that, then we were kicked out of that grant system because the top three grants, the expenses were much higher. Than what they anticipated with the increase in expenses that have evolved and. Underneath, so we're no longer a consideration for that, next opportunity for that, I believe is in two years for the traffic diet portion, but. The Oregon Department of Transportation, uh to avoid lawsuit, has to redo our intersection at Cityway one-on-one because of ADA issues. And I believe that planning is underway now, the conversations have been had with property owners that are next to that intersection. And I believe that construction will start at the end of twenty five or the beginning of twenty six. Uh, for the new lighting uh situation.
About changing the lane, the lanes from.
That's the traffic diet issue and it will probably be a couple of years until we're uh able to get back into there, it depends on how the legislature goes, ODOT is pretty short on money. Uh, right now, so I'm not sure how that's going to happen.
Is there, did the city of Astoria take a different course when they reduced their lanes from two to one, you know, where they reduced those lanes? Do you know what I'm talking about?
I'm, I do know what I'm talking about and I'm not sure, I'm not sure. Uh, but I can ask around on that, but you know, the, the project was in the uh above a million dollars. So I'm not sure if Astoria funded any of that themselves, we would be relying on grants.
Any other questions? Thank you, Chad. Okay, Gearhart Volunteer Fire Department.
Can you read my name for all, I'm the vice president of the Volunteer Fire Department Association and. Tonight, I need to ask your permission if we could have our firefighter ball be funded, I'm on the Monday weekend, it's the same one we've been doing for years. And it will basically be the same thing we've done for years, just need your permission to move forward a little bit.
Anyone wanna make a motion?
I, I've got a question, I mean, this is February, you guys don't have the volunteer in the man.
Right.
Or, or are we dealing with this in February?
These are busy people and we wanna be ahead of the game.
Takes that long to organize a ball?
We have to get the tent, we have to get all the permissions from everybody, so it takes a while, being ahead of the game is a lot better than asking at the last minute.
Any other questions or concerns?
No.
Motion?
Is this under the liquor license application?
No, motion to approve and the request to hold the ball.
Uh, I, I move, I move that we give permission to hold the fire. And I second it.
Okay, now's the time for discussion, but since you've already discussed, let's have a uh, aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Sorry, Paul, I know, I forgot.
I said aye.
I, I got you, I got it.
Okay, thanks sir, may I reach out?
You got it, cheese, thank you very much. You'll stay?
Sir.
Okay.
Before you guys, I wanted to uh introduce one of our volunteers to you, folks, this is Rob Brooks. He is now lieutenant with us uh on the fire department, Rob came to us with a lot of experience and he has been a wonderful uh addition to the fire department. And not only that, but he's brought his wife, his wife also is a volunteer with us, Cory, uh they were both fantastic, uh they lived around here for about how many years now?
About three years.
Yeah, uh immediately came in and started volunteering and it definitely increased our capabilities, so.
Thank you, Rob.
You keep bringing Shannon up.
All right. Anyone wishing to address the city council concerning items of interest not on the agenda, they do so at this time. All remarks will be limited to five minutes per person, requests to comment electronically must be submitted. By email to thecityrecorder@info@cityofgearhart.com, no later than four P M the day of the meeting. In-person attendees wishing to speak are required to sign in prior to the meeting. I do not have a sign-in sheet and it's nothing, so that's the perfect. All right, anyone in the audience wishing to speak on something that isn't on the agenda? Thank you very much. All right, so written public comment acknowledgement, I have, and I believe this will be called. Late correspondence, but we'll go to, in our packet, I have a letter from Anthony Pope, who is. The county council, and that is to Deanna Mansell about the weeping willow. That's the only. Correspondence and late correspondence is a message from Deanna Mansell about the weeping willow, so we've gotten two. There you are. Now. New business, request to speak during new business is limited to three minutes and your comments are strictly on.
We do have one more visitor in.
Oh, I'm so sorry, it's Chris Hyatt, are you there? Yep.
I am.
We have our water modeler here to give us a little report and slideshow.
Hey, Chris, when, when you introduce yourself, would you mind telling us what you do?
Uh, yeah, um, I'm a geologist and I specialize in hydrogeology, which is groundwater. And I've been working with the city since uh. The water system was thought of uh back in two thousand and three or so. Um, it was actually the guy walked into the office of Dennis Pignelli and said, hey, here you have a water project coming up. And uh I've been working in some capacity uh ever since towards C.
Thank you.
Okay, Chris, you got a slideshow or something you wanna?
Yeah, I have a, um, I prepared a, uh some graphs that I'm not sure how to show you. Um.
So it would be share, share screen on Zoom. And then you would click on the screen that you have your slides. And Christie, is the share screen button near the bottom?
Yes, it's on the very bottom and it's got a green box with an arrow pointing at.
Okay, got it.
You can subject here, nothing funny on your other computer, just a bit of.
Yeah.
There we go, we got the screen sharing, now you choose which screen you would like to show, and we have that, and if you could hit. The F eleven key on your computer.
What button is that, epileptic?
F eleven, oh, you might be on.
Oh, F eleven.
Yeah, that would be screen maximize so that we could see it, then if not, no worries, we can deal with this.
Can you see that?
That's a little better.
That is maximized, uh.
Okay, I, yeah, we, we can see it.
Uh, so, uh, I'm trying to be short and concise because. I could talk about this project for hours, um and there are a lot of different tangents that you can. Um, go off on, but as you know, the city has a water right. And that water right uh dictates how much water the city can pump uh from your well field every month. And the graph on the right says uh twenty twenty-three uh water demand. You'll see the orange line is. You'll see the orange line is how much the water right allows you to withdraw every month. And you'll see it, there is a big dip in the, in the summer months. Uh, we have plenty of water in the winter, wet months, but very little water in the, um, summer months. Then the blue line underneath that, um, is showing how much water you, the city actually consumes, um, where the demand. And you see that the, you know, quite a bit in the summertime when population is at its peak, visitors, and also obviously water usage increases because of, uh, irrigation, watering lawns, gardens, so forth. So in this, what you'll see is when the, when we have a deficit in the summer months where the two lines cross over here, uh, this little area where, um, you know, we don't have water, it's a deficit. And we get that ma- makeup for that deficit, uh, by importing water from warranted. Um, and so warranty is you have a mutual agreement with them for, I think it lasts two more years. And they have said, you know, we'll give you X amount of water per year, but, but no more. And as recently have said, you weren't, I guess, is going through some growth spurt of their own. Um, and said, you know, you may want to go shopping elsewhere for your, uh, your water. Um, and so, uh, we are applying for another water rate, um, to make up for that deficit that we see between July and October. Uh, the new water rate would only apply for those three or four months. Uh, because I can see plenty of water, uh, more than enough in the winter months, January through out June. Uh, you know, plenty of, plenty of water. And then again, November, December. So it's only a story under the blue curve that we're looking to, uh, to augment. Uh, and in doing so, we are looking at, uh, not just now, how much water we're gonna, we need, but also into the future. And so we do a projection out about 20 years to 2024. And, uh, we could see if you're looking at the two graphs here, uh, that the area enter that, um, uh, blue curve and the orange curve increases quite a bit. Uh, we almost double, um, the, uh, the demand. Um, so you're probably asking, why do we have this big dip, this U in the, uh, in the water right? And that has to do with, um, surface water. The Water Resource Department, um, because we are so close to the Pacific Ocean and near Coxey Creek to the east, there's concern that our pumping, our well field will interfere and either, um, create saltwater intrusion, which is not very likely, but we monitor it anyway. And then for Neocosty Creek, they're worrying of decreasing the flow in the creek and us, uh, uh, impacting, uh, fish and wildlife and so forth. Um, so they reduce our flow, our permitted flow, uh, during those three or four months when, uh, water levels are lowest and low and behold, that's where we need the water the most. Um, so we are, um, also a part of our water rate. We are required to monitor a number of parameters. You've probably seen the well, the Sentinel wells that are on the dune there. There are three outstanding dunes. Uh, and those are Sentinel wells, uh, designed to, um, uh, detect, uh, saltwater intrusion. So if we see certain parameters increase, we know you pump too much, too hard. And that saltwater is starting to, uh, flow eastward towards the water well. Uh, but they're out there ways, they're giving us a heads up. So we know before, uh, before it's the, uh, the well field. Again, the potential that happening is very, very low. Um, and we also monitor, we have wells, uh, from about Marion Street, uh, east towards the Incoxy. And then we have another well on the other side of Neocosty to the east. And they are monitoring, uh, potential impacts, uh, or change in the flow to Neocosty Creek. On top of that, if that was definitely, also have a stream gauge in the Incoxy, uh, which is bearing, uh, not just, uh, levels, uh, and flow, but temperature, uh, salinity, dissolve the oxygen, all these other, uh, parameters. Um, and we've been monitoring those, um, uh, conditions on the permit since 2012, 13. Uh, and we've created a, a huge dip in sort of those 10, 12 years. Uh, the wells are, are, are capturing a measurement, uh, every two hours. Uh, so six wells every two hours are registering temperature, pressure, chloride, toluze off solids, uh, salinity, bunch of other things. Um, and then the Proved Neocosty Creek is capturing that every 15 minutes. Um, so there's a, you know, uh, a trend surrounded out collecting every year. And that data is, is, uh, summarized in a report that we send to the, uh, the state showing how we are complying with the various conditions that are in the, um, the permit. Um, so in look to, in order to, uh, uh, justify our new water rate, uh, the city, the city said, you're gonna have to show us that you're not gonna have any impact to either the Pacific saltwater intrusion, which is during. We run, um, and I can't quite verify this yet and I shouldn't speak too soon, but one of the things, surprising things we're seeing that as we pump harder, pump more water, we actually see an increased flow in Neocosty Creek, which seems counterintuitive. Uh, if we were to aim back, you would, you would think that we would lower the levels at Neocosty. Um, but because, uh, all of the residents there are septic systems, um, we are pumping from the well fields, you know, west. And that water is being used in the east, uh, portion. And so some is in proximity to Neocosty are actually, because of the septic systems, they are recharging the aquifer, actually adding water to Neocosty. Um, which was very surprising for us to, uh, to kind of have this, uh, uh, revelation. Um, and the other thing is Neocosty, as you probably know, is, is tightly influenced. So any impacts we might have would be replaced, um, in the next incoming tide. Uh, so we have to account for this. The model is really complicated. Um, but I'll end by saying that, and you probably have questions. Um, and by saying we're wrapping up the, uh, um, the model, uh, we have a few more runs, do a few more scenarios we need to, um, to work out. Uh, but all this is to, uh, give, uh, some justification to the state that, uh, yeah, one, we need the water, obviously. And two, that are increased, our request for an increase in, uh, um, uh, the quantity is not going to have, has had impact over the last 10, 12 years? And will that have an impact over the, uh, next 20 years if, uh, under an increased, um, allocation? Um, so, um, it's good news.
Great, thank you very much, Chris. That was very informative. Are you, uh, saying that instead of getting the restrictions taken off our water right, we're going to go for a new water right that is going to supersede the old water right?
Yeah, it's, it's a regulatory, you know, if government can ever make things more difficult, they will. Uh, and so it, the way the rules, regulations in Oregon water law are set up is, uh, uh, essentially, yeah, you need a new water rate. So we would get a new water rate, uh, for, uh, July through, uh, September, October every year, which would say you can pump, um, what you're already allocated plus, you know, point five or 1.5 CFS uh, during those months. So you have two, it kind of overlaps. Like I say, it does make sense intuitively, we just say, write an addendum, um, and, and change numbers on the original water right. But like you say, W R D number does this, does things this simple way.
Right. Thank you very much for the information, Chris. That was really quite informative.
Yeah, and if you have any questions about how the whole system works, you know, we do an annual report every year, uh, showing the compliance with the water right. And, uh, uh, in all the numbers of how much water is pumped, uh, uh, what the concentrations of various constituents are. Uh, it's all in a report that we submit to the state and Chad has a copy of that and, um, uh, as is Mark McFadden. So I kind of outlined some of the history too of, uh, how the project, uh, changed over the years. So.
Great, thank you.
You bet.
Does anyone have any questions?
Uh, Chris, if we obtain the wa- the new water right, will that make us completely independent from warranty?
That's the idea, yes. In the future, I see, do everyone has a problem, there's a lot of growth going on, um, increased population, the fact that warranty is saying, you know, we can't inspire our own people, uh, so you're, you're gonna have to get off our system. Seaside have zero problems, um, scarcity of water. Um, so in the future, I think there's good, I foresee a, what I call real water authority, uh, where seaside, Gearheart and, uh, some of the areas in between there kind of pooled together their resources, uh, and do more sharing and kind of interconnect that whole, uh, pipeline system that runs, you know, up and down that section of the coast.
Right.
Chris? Chris? Is, is there any value in considering having, uh, more storage of water so that we can draw off more during the plentiful months and have it in reserve?
Yes. Uh, that is something we consider when we first, you know, started off on this, uh, uh, we, uh, you know, did kind of feasibility study, uh, and we looked at things like, um, is there a water right nearby that we could transfer? A water right that wasn't, uh, being used? You could transfer water rights with the basin. Those are, we couldn't find any. Um, could we do aquifer storage or recovery where we, uh, that's a concept where you actually take water and inject it into the aquifer, uh, during the winter months, uh, and then extract that water out in the summer months. Um, the problem is that the water that you inject has to be, uh, portable water. So you would have to treat that water in your treatment plant, then pump it into the ground and pull it back out in the, in the summer. And that would be, um, and there are a lot of other water quality restrictions that would, uh, uh, be very expensive. Um, uh, you can look at, uh, desalination, um, as a last resort. But desalination is, you know, it sounds easy enough, but desalination is, um, has a very low return on investment. Um, you would need a new waters treatment system using different technology. Then I think the return on, uh, you pump, I believe it's 200 gallons to produce one gallon of portable water. Uh, and then on top of that, you have all the salt, uh, and all the, you know, stuff, the cruddy that's in the ocean, you pull it out of the water. You're gonna have to manage that as a waste. Uh, you can't shoot up back in the ocean or something. Um, and thirdly, we all have these surface water bodies, you know, uh, to, uh, withdraw from. Uh, typically, in these scenarios, you would look at nearby river, creek and, and take water from that. But here we're already dealing with, uh, fears of impacts to Neocosty, which is the nearest, you know, surface water body. So this, uh, you know, new water right is really the cheapest and, uh, uh, and fastest remedy.
Thank you. Thank you.
You bet.
Anyone else have a question? Thank you very much, Chris.
Okay, my pleasure.
Thanks, President.
All right. We're going to move on. That is very interesting. It's a very technical, but it's a very interesting modeling procedure that they use. Okay, new business. And that is the request for three minute comment. Anyone wishing to comment, please raise your hand. You'll be limited to three minutes to the topic at hand. I see none. The first one is going to be fire department request for funds. Any comments from the audience? Chief, would you like to run through this or do you want Chad to do that?
I can do it.
Okay, then you do it.
Thank you. So I'm requesting funds to replace one of our two really outdated staff vehicles that we have. And the report I gave you, I stated out, it's a standard for most of Parkinson's and FPA states, replacing staff vehicles every six to eight years. You can extend that a few more years if you cycle them down to a status such as a weakened duty officer or like what seaside uses their lifeguard rigs or whatever. Both of the vehicles that will either replace one now and one in the future are well past that 10 year timeframe with that. The one that is really, really in desperate need, we have done many repairs to it, as many as I think we can. And it would still hold water on the floorboards that are not, there's holes in the floorboards to drain the water out. We've replaced drip rails in there, we rebuilt the drip rails, resealed them, bought new seals. That's just the water intrusion leaks in there, it has, as well as all the other issues it has. And the division chief has invited anybody that would like to take a ride for her in her new staff vehicle, if they have questions, they should be more than happy to do so with that in there. So I'm asking for $85,000, which is the price of the vehicle and all the upfitting, which is on the lower end of the standard of what it costs most places to do it. What we are looking to do, the City Vast Storage just did one for $100,000. Seaside did one, doing the wiring and stuff themselves, which we will do. It's the same as we've done with our other apparatus we have, which saves about $20,000 to $25,000 when you do wiring on your own. It costs about $25,000 just to take it someplace to have them install the lights and the radios and stuff for you in there. So 85, up to 85 is what the request is. I wanted to remind, last time I asked for funds out of this account was when one of our apparatus needs fixed. We had a trade with that, I asked with $10,000 and I came in under budget, $3,000 under. My absolute goal with this, the goal is to spend all of that, it's the, do it means we don't have the vehicle from there. So if there's any other questions or anything we have with that, I can say, I did ask originally after consulting with the mayor or a second one, there was some thoughts with that. We can, we can do the one that's been really desperate need now. And so we looked at what the second one would need to have costs done so we could take it up. And it has a current list of $2,000 of repairs needed done to it in there. So if we were able to do that, maybe push it off a little bit, what have you, with that line there. What happens in the future, who knows with that question?
Okay. So if we want to go to discussion, I need a motion.
I'll give you a motion to approve the chief's request for reserve funds up to $85,000 to purchase and upfit any department vehicle with vendor selection at the department's discretion.
Thank you. Second, okay, now we're in discussion. I believe, and I really do, we've got two vehicles that are on their deathbeds. We've got the money in the account, we should go and get two vehicles because next year it's going to be $30,000 more. And we'll be looking at over $100,000 for one of these vehicles instead of getting it at 85 right now.
Not only that, I would, you know, 2,000 is what you're estimating, but who knows how much more it's going to be. And two new vehicles would then be under warranty and, you know, presumably the repairs would be much less, so we could save a little bit of money there.
And the other thing is maybe we can get on a little bit sooner replacement. I can understand trying to get your last licks out of a vehicle, but if you're drilling holes in the floorboard, I mean, and she's sunk it in.
Do what I can to make it last.
You know, when your foot goes through to stop the car.
Yes, sir.
But that's, I, I would like to either withdraw your motion, I'd like to make a motion
Sure.
that we allocate funds of $170,000 up to 170,000 for two new vehicles for the fire department. So these guys are driving safe vehicles.
I'll give you a second.
Okay. We can go back into discussion.
Is it appropriate to ask Justine how she feels about what would be left in the reserve fund?
Well, 170 from 400.
Right.
I think that question would be more for the chief, is, you know, what are your future expenses are, what he thinks. Justine knows how much money we have in there, but she does not have a capital expenditure plan that the chief does to be fine with going to answer that.
Okay. So that would leave, if we were to go at 170, it would leave a little over 300,000 left in that reserve fund. There is some talks, who knows what happens, you know, in November, going to a new station. If we don't, what will we need to do to our current fund to make sure it's safe as can be? We are doing some stuff now to mitigate some of those issues after reports we got. The next vehicle we'll get replaced would be our second due engine that's held at the substation. With that, I have some thoughts in there and I can't remember if I put that in the report or not. Some different pathways of funding for that apparatus when it comes time for that. It is held at the substation. My first track, there's about two different tracks of grants that could come through to replace that apparatus. I finally got all the documentation, everything submitted, so we can apply for grants through the district. And that, doing it that way, it puts us in a different category when we apply. When we apply for grants to the city, it's a combination. They separate the grants from, you know, three different categories, full carrier, combination ball two. When we apply through, through the city, obviously you have to apply for a combination department, that's what we have. I got everything submitted to the district, so we can apply through grants to the district. And how they look at that, it's 100% volunteer work. So that's, that's a different category. And then it's better chances because it's an instant regional grant because of the district and the city. When you combine, so you have better chances of receiving, we can.
Where's that money coming from?
FEMA, AFG grants that we get. We use it to get our SCBA bottles, the last two times we've gotten it, we got the SCBA compressor off that. We got the Unimon off of that grant, so we've gotten multiple things off that in the past. Another path would maybe a co-sink pieces out of the substation up in the district board, whether they take full cost of that and they deal with that. Or a split cost between the city and district. Be there, and then the final option would be, the same way we got the engine we have here would be, it's a government lease? Is that what it's called, what we did for 2021?
No, we actually purchased it using a loan from a bank.
A loan from a bank. From there, so that's what that would be, a vote from that, that would be the next move that would come forth in there. Other than that, I don't know what comes out in the future. None of us really knows with that. I think that would leave a substantial amount, 300 in there. But you never really know, but like, can throw a chat, what, what?
We have to depend on your experience. So if that doesn't, I guess what I'm asking is, you know, does it make you at all concerned or nervous that that's all you would have left?
It makes me concerned for how much money one costs and that's why I put it off so long. I was really hoping prices would level out and stuff and they haven't. What scares me is what happens if a vehicle doesn't work and if, or if they put the floorboard of what's there. What I'd like to have that account would be a billion dollars in there all the time because who knows what will happen. So I am encouraged with what I've been bringing up mobilizations in the last two years. That's one reason I showed you, we brought in $83,000 after paying our own vehicle maintenance and everything from there. Just in two years of mobilization funds in there. Who knows what the future will hold?
Well, I would also point out that you mentioned in here that the funds from selling the vehicles, the old vehicles wouldn't go back in there, so it wouldn't be the full 170. Do you have any idea how much those vehicles are going to be worth, did you?
No.
But it would be, that's, that's going to be, that's going to go back in the account.
Maybe about 5,000, maybe a little bit more.
So that'll go back in the account.
So they're not even worth driving, that's how good they are.
Yeah. We've got a Ford F-150 out here that we could bid on tomorrow. I'm kidding.
It's great, first vehicle for my kid.
Yeah, I got it, yeah. No, I, I'm sold by it, you know, I was horrified when I saw how old those vehicles are.
So I guess my only other concern, I tend to be more of a saver than a spender just by nature. So I guess my only other concern would be, we don't, we don't know what's going to happen. Depending on getting monies from FEMA may or may not work out in the future. And we, that's looking potentially a little bleak, maybe. So I don't know, I'm just, you know what I'm saying, I mean, it's low.
If you see what he's written about 29 or 2961 has the potential to throw a rod soon. And that's the vehicle he's keeping. You don't want them driving down the highway and throw a rod and not getting to their place.
Right.
And it's just, and for me, I say, that's why we have what we have. But if it takes money to make money, and this is basically, you're making something safe and that's saving money.
Yeah, no, I totally get where you're coming from. And saving that much money by having a boat now is, you know, it's, it's, it's great and it's a huge consideration. So that potential to throw a rod, is that not repairable or?
So when we, when we recently got it evaluated, we took it up to Astoria Ford. They gave me something different than a previous mechanic, so glad you brought that up. Because I, when I took it to a mechanic before, they said the knocking tick was, was lift valves and all that could be thrown. Because it was made better, I put some different oil in there. Astoria Ford says it's just head bolts on there that you replace. Is the ticking sound that, another mechanic thought maybe a rod. Another one of the repairs was for a four wheel drive hub that is out. I can't remember what the third one on there, what would that do to that?
So, so here's the thing, so you're, you're asking us for one vehicle. You'd like to see two vehicles be purchased. I mean, if you really felt like we were down to the nth degree, wouldn't you have asked for two vehicles or?
I didn't want to ask for two and get denied, is what I told the mayor in office, is I don't want to come out swimming for the fence and fall short. If it was me, if this was my bank account, I wouldn't purchase two because it'd be cheaper now. We don't know what we'll need the money for in the future, what will come. We don't know what repairs will come with what we currently have, if anything can get worse.
Right, and you don't know what the price is, but you know it's not coming down.
So, Mr. Mayor, if, if I might, just because I've been watching the prices in a lot of different jurisdictions and they just keep going up. And it's not like 3% or 5%, it's 10% or waiting six months or waiting 12 months at one jurisdiction where it was a highly specialized vehicle, but it was going to be over 18 months. And I completely get why chief is going conservative with his ask, but, I mean, I, it would, in my mind, seeing what's happened and, and there's no end in sight and there are likely going to be supply chain issues with chips and other things. It might be really prudent to get these two cars locked up and to know that we're set for the next 10 years or so and not have to worry about the impact, the outside impact of parts that maybe manufactured in south of our border or assembled there or coming from across the Pacific Ocean. It just seems like there's a lot of potential risk. Nobody has a crystal ball, I certainly don't. But I remember a time when this number would have been 55, 60 and it wasn't that long ago. And he, he's got, he's getting a real good deal because the number I would expect is closer to 100. So all kudos to chief for negotiating the deal he's doing and trying to get what he's getting. But boy, there's just, there's a lot of uncertainty around supply chain issues coming up. And that, that could cause prices to spike. And that's what we saw during the pandemic. And I don't anticipate another pandemic, but there are other market forces that are at play that could really impact the ability to get new vehicles at all.
Okay, is there any other discussion or questions?
I have a concern about, we're going to be going to the voting public here for a whole new public safety building month, right? I'm just concerned about, you know, what the, what the general public is going to think about you guys, you know, spending a bunch of money now and then asking for more money then and, and, you know, have you, you know, and this is, this has got nothing to do with that, but have you talked to Thad Nolan of the Murs? About, about, Astoria Ford doesn't have any mechanics.
I thought they have certified, you can't shop hard.
No. Thad Nolan is the sharpest mechanic in classic town.
They have taken a couple of vehicles to him personally.
Okay. You know, have you, have you bothered to ask him to look at this vehicle? I mean, I'm not, not that I'm saying that, you know, that we could, should live this along for two or three years.
I think 2962 belongs on the Murs shape. I think that that was taken to him for an AC issue and something else years ago. He didn't like the electrical job that was done to it, he didn't want to do anything with it. For some reason, I want to say that.
I mean, you actually do own 62s, it's just absolutely, absolutely repaired.
Yeah. And, and with that, if anybody in the public is asking, I would say that, that I went out of showing that I've done everything I can to make them last as long as, as I, I could with them. I rebuilt the drip rail. Because of the light bar on top of Mark Bolt's and it causes huge rust issues on the road, I rebuilt the drip rail in the public workshop on that and took the light bar off and we rebuilt with metal and Bondo and then automotive paint. And rebuilt the whole drip rail up there and then got whole new seals put on there to potentially stop the leaking and it didn't help on there. We have taken that vehicle in to get an alignment done, two different places and it hasn't helped it. One was Shaw, one was Snucks Auto or Snucks, tried to fix all the multiple things with it. So it's been into multiple shops and different things and into the county, whatever. And we've done quite a bit to try to, try to fix that as well.
Yeah, I would suggest in the future that you, that you, if you know Thad, then he'll take in project, you know, for his class.
And using to teach the students.
Yeah, correct, you know, I would use that resource.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor, 170 for two vehicles, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Those abstaining?
Abstaining.
Okay, four to one abstaining. Thank you guys very much. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Next, on the new business, anyone wanting to talk about the liquor license application? Or the special event? The Gearhart firefighter ball? Okay. We've already given them approval to have their ball. Shall we have a motion to approve the GVFD Association liquor license application for the annual firefighter ball?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those who abstain? I didn't hear.
That would be, must be funding for death site.
You are. All right. Anyone wishing to speak? About the OLCC City Liquor License Renewals? This is under new business, I see no hands raised. All right, is a list of liquor license renewals. If we do nothing, OLCC will take that as an affirmative and we'll go ahead and process. Does anyone wish to make comment, concerns?
I have a question.
Okay.
Um so the Drift Haven has a full liquor license, which means they can serve mixed drinks?
The liquor license would enable them to do that if they were able to have a restaurant. They are not able to have a restaurant, so they are able to do beer and wine uh at that location and uh there's really no way for them to have a restaurant. So that is the protection that we have there.
It's not really, even though the license is full, it's not, that's not really what they could.
Imperfect, that's correct.
Thank you.
I see that the, I see that the Gear Hard Liquor Store's got two liquor licenses. Is that because of Truckee's beer and wine that he's selling out of there? I didn't think that you can sell beer and wine out of it.
Off of sales, off of sales.
State liquor store.
Two different license numbers.
I'm like, he's using it as a market and then a liquor store. Well, I mean, yours is good. You, it used to be you couldn't, you couldn't sell beer and wine out of, out of a state liquor store. Second, correct, chief?
Uh it used to be, however, you go to seaside liquor store, they actually sell beer and wine in there as well. So there's been some chances for that, I think.
That might be it.
Might be beer, wine, and wine.
Okay.
Uh, one more question. So uh back to the Drift Haven, if they have an outdoor gathering party, whatever, they can serve beer and wine out in their yard place?
If it, if it has to do with the use of the, as I would tell them, yes.
And who monitors that they're only serving beer and wine? How's that? Nobody?
OLCC.
Yeah, OLCC has
Do they send a person to attend the party or?
Say again.
Do they send a person to attend the party?
They have to get our firefighter ball.
They have come before. At least one year, I think one year had to get shut down early, isn't that correct?
Yeah, okay.
I'm not saying it was your fault. I'm just saying I keep it in the bag.
I'm gonna read out of it.
Sorry.
I doubt very seriously if the OLCC came and and tested everybody that came through the entrance to the Gear Hard Fireman's Ball, that they wouldn't have, you guys wouldn't have any custom. Because everybody's paced before you can get to them.
Pre-game.
Yeah.
But they do tell us they come and and they're just wearing regular clothes. They don't have any, anything stating that OLCC. Afterwards, they have to tell you they are. And we, almost every year, they come and when they leave, I find the OLCC guys are doing great. Yeah.
Yeah. Well, after, after the
After they make a laugh.
After the, after the uh number one assistant from the OLCC stood between Bessin and I and said, uh, I can, I can see twenty, twenty visibly intoxicated people just where I'm standing. Bessin turned to him and said, what are you, blind? You know, that was, he came up, he showed up in following Wednesday when we were, had a business. Yeah, that's when he said we'd never ever get a liquor license.
No, so we have, we have to keep a logbook at the bar and they have to write down everybody and when you get cut off and everything, we have to have a license server and
You can only serve beer and wine.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, so back to my, so just, I just want, so the OLCC is the person who would monitor the Drift Haven?
So it's a simple motion, do nothing? All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay.
Aye.
Thank you, Paulina. We make a motion for the, to appoint a budget officer? If you look under council options, number one, if someone says that.
Make a motion that the city treasurer be designated as a budget officer.
I said that.
Sir. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Thank you.
All right. Now, approve the budget calendar. And Justine's got it all laid out in there and you can go back and look at it. The only thing I wanna point out is May thirteenth is our first meeting, if I'm reading this right. Just make sure Klosch group knows that.
April fifth. April fifteenth.
Okay, well, May thirteenth is the second one, but they'd like that Tuesday.
Yeah.
Just make sure they're not inflicted. All right. Number one is a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget calendar.
All those in, ah, sorry. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All right. Moving on to new business, Gear Hard Cleanup Day in honor of Earth Day, April nineteenth.
Great. I move we allow the city to hold Cleanup Day.
All those. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 What was the discussion?
I didn't want any.
What do you wanna discuss? We're here for you.
Well, I mean, do we know whether or not the garbage company is gonna work with us on this or?
No, Justine, Justine's been working really closely with them over the last couple of years. They've kind of uh taken the time to whether or not they're going to grant us. Call if you actually pays for part of this uh to do that, and it takes them some time to get through that process. We're getting ahead of it to make sure that we can make it for Earth Day. Last year, they, we did the same thing. They still came up and they still donated towards this. Uh I gave it to a reasonable amount. Like last year, the city quarter reported the donation went from around eighteen to twenty-five hundred due to exceeding the maximum tonnage. So we actually did pay a lot. Uh following the event, the actual invoice totaled around nineteen hundred. So they donated uh to make up that difference. We figured that the event will be about the same, about nineteen hundred, but it could be more. We're not so sure. The only other difference is that uh the um mechanic watershed council would like to just have a little booth there to collect some soda cans to help fund their projects. And their projects are usually good for gear work, so we uh throw them in there as well. But I'm not sure exactly what it's gonna cost, around nineteen, possibly up to twenty-five hundred.
Well, it sounds like if our tonnage is increasing, the public really likes us and is taking advantage of it.
That and the increased amount of people that are in our town. Uh we're definitely busier these days, so that's just getting a little bit more expensive.
We can count the number of people that are in the town there, Peter. Take it back to the Portland State.
Any data you can give me, thank you.
Okay, moving on. Council concerned, Paulina?
None.
Okay, Preston? Sharon?
No.
Dana?
No, sir.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll adjourn.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.